There is no doubt that your views at this joint public hearing will go a long way in assisting the committee. Make an informed recommendation or recommendations to the Senate and the House of Representatives respectively. It is this submission or recommendation of the committee that the Senate and the House of Representatives rely on to pass or make relevant laws for the good governance of our citizenry as a shrine in the 1999 constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria amended. The Honorable's responsibility. The Honorable's responsibility bestowed on the joint committee by both the standing rules and constitution is achievable when the caliber of its leadership and membership are taken into consideration. Presenting National Assembly at its inception in 2023, set out for itself a legislative agenda whose implementation will surely bring about a tremendous improvement in the living conditions, conditions to stroke standards of the citizenry while Mr. President's Renew Hope Agenda. Today's hearing, no doubt, in line with the agenda, and so also I expect the outcome. Distinguished stakeholders are wish to urge you to freely express your views and opinions either for or against the subject of this hearing in a manner that will bring about the sustenance of our collective will to be together as a nation that we shall all call ours. Today's joint hearing, which focuses on student loan, so access to higher education, repeal and reenactment bill 2024, we know that add to the quality of legislation, the present National Assembly will be quick to our citizenry at the end of this year. Based on the foregoing, it is my singular pleasure and honor once again welcome all of you and to declare openly these joint public hearing been organized by both chambers and I wish you a fruitful deliberations. Thank you very much.
If this bill is properly deliberated by the critical stakeholders, both academia, the financial institutions and the students that are here present, I believe will have a value addition to this country. Because Nigeria is blessed, we have all the basic raw materials needed for development and education is the key to success. We have the minister under esteemed estimable officials. We have the captains of financial industries that are here present and the students that are here who are suffering most in this payments of their bills. That is why under the Renew Hope Agenda that this bill is being passed and is being considered and it has some challenges that need to be deliberated this afternoon to ensure sustainability, maintenance and accountability and also for a better success of our yet unborn generation.
This particular fund is not about that. This particular fund has non sources of resources as identified in the act. So we keep playing our own part and we keep supporting whatever it takes to lift Nigerians out of poverty. Our followers maintain also that good governance is about the welfare of the people and the welfare of the people is about good governance and education is part of the critical part. So we keep supporting and we keep playing our part to ensure that that trust in even selecting the central bank as the main institution, as the banker to the bank to be the custodian of the fund is maintained going forward. And of course, as we engage, we also have our submission, but like I said, today's hearing is basically to give other stakeholders who are not necessarily part of the executive that opportunity to hear from their own side and to tap from their own brain and to also get their own input in enriching the decision making process. On that note, I want to thank you very much and our tools. I want to invite the secretary to the fund to make a few remarks.
Let me start by saying that this is a defining moment in the story of this nation. Today, we stand at the crossroads of possibility where we have the power to create a future where every individual, regardless of their economic standing, can boldly dream and flourish. Imagine this, if you may, the daughter of a humble gay man at the gate of this complex, born into a world where odds are stacked against her. Her dreams are tempered by the harsh realities of economic disparity as she grows up in the shadows of privilege, yet fueled by the belief that her destiny is not predetermined by the circumstances of her birth. She remains unwavering in her quest for knowledge, often burning the midnight lantern despite the ridicule. She faces obstacles, her aspirations are often dismissed as fanciful. Still, she stays resolute in her drive to defy expectations. She works odd jobs to support herself, scraping together every cobble to fund her education. Eventually, her dreams take shape. Against all odds, the daughter of a gay man becomes a doctor. This story about the power of community, of refusal to accept status quo, the status quo of teachers who encourage ambition, of strangers who offer support in times of doubt, of legislators who make the right policy decisions. It's a story of a country that believes in the inherent wealth and dignity of every person, regardless of their pedigree or their circumstances. The people's president steps in, the first of its kind, of this particular kind of student loan scheme made possible by His Excellency President Bola Ahmed Tinubu G C F R. Is about investing in the future and unlocking the potential of young Nigerians. It's a signature program of this administration and the flagship program of the president. His Excellency recognizes the significance of education for the future generations of our nation, Nigeria. It's not a matter to be trifled with. The late Abamey Olo transform the western region by introducing free education. With that said, there are a few things to keep in mind. One, does the current law set the right, set the great principles and policy objectives? Two, are there gaps in the current law? Three, is there ever a law that is perfect? Four, can we, in spite of the gaps, make a bold move to start this historic process? These are questions we must ask ourselves. We must hold ourselves to the highest standards of integrity and fairness by building a system founded on the principles of transparency, accountability and inclusion. We must build a foundation that fosters trust, confidence and which can attract funding locally and internationally. Everything must be done to de-politicize this scheme. By establishing clear impartial criteria for eligibility, we ensure that loans are allocated based on merit rather than on partisan interests. Having worked on this novel idea for the past few months, I see this as a great opportunity to give young Nigerians hope and succor, a shot at the best possible start in life. There are obvious gaps in the current legal framework, but there are also great initiatives in it that we must preserve and uphold, the sanctity to preserve to uphold the sanctity of this project. I believe, I believe the role of the CBN Governor Chair in the special committee has made kickstarting this fund very effective, giving need for it to start on a solid, transparent and sustainable structure. Going forward, we think this spirit should be sustained, albeit differently. This should be done in trust through a board of trustees. I e. make the board of directors or special committee a board of trustees with reputable institutional membership to hold this fund in trust for future generations. This promotes fairness and equal opportunities, allowing students from all backgrounds to access the support required to pursue their educational goals. That is why we at Nelfon have developed a technology-based system that seeks to do just that. The loan fund should be run like a development financial institution for one simple reason, efficiency. And the best way to achieve this is to keep it within what? The CBN. Financial institutions operate with a focus on accountability, risk management and strategic planning. This allows for optimization of the process and adherence to regulatory standards, invariably instilling confidence in stakeholders. This will require diversification of funding sources to avoid dependence on a single revenue stream while ensuring stability in the changing economic situations. Prudent financial management will be necessary to maximize resources in addition to continuous innovation and adaptability to evolving individual and educational landscapes. I am making these statements because I believe that we at Nelfon are well positioned to speak about what's working correctly and what could work better for the fund. Mr. President is eager to make this happen and we are all set. I believe the essence for this gathering here is to support this honorable cause and not to limit it. Finally, this program is not for the elite. It is for those who hope and dream of a better future despite dire financial constraints and turbulent circumstances in their lives. It is for those who cannot afford a meal if they don't make sales in a day. It is for those who hold on to hope for a prosperous life in defiance of their current dire financial predicament. This one is for Nigerians and the future of our beloved country.
Today's gathering spells clearly that it's all about student loan access to higher education. I will present here the views, the yearnings and the aspirations of Nigerian students, which is the reason why everyone here gathered. We are directly involved, so the law today is all about us. We know how our students feel and I am directed to present their feeling. Fourteenth of February, which is Valentine's Day, the leadership of NAFS met Mr. President in the villa. We presented our challenges, our yearning and our aspiration. Hence, we have a repeal and reenactment to date of the bill. I will go straight to it without wasting much time and I want to call all North Africa's people attentively to the position of Nigerian students. These are our views. The National Assembly of Nigerian Students presents over 40 million Nigerian students' aspirations. I represent both Atso and Indazbo. We commend President Bola Ahmed Tinubu for listening to our request by including the leadership of NAFS as a representative of students on the law board. We appreciate the decision to send the bill back for review to address gray areas that could hinder the success of the law scheme. Again, we are grateful to the leadership of the National Assembly for the invitation to the public hearing, giving us an opportunity to present our position as we believe that decisions affecting us should involve us. We want to again commend our distinguished senator and honourable member for acknowledging this and for their effort to pass the bill forward quickly. This demonstrates that the current leadership values students as important stakeholders in the education sector who should not be overlooked. Recontizing this fact, we would like to express the following position on behalf of Nigerian students at SEU. We suggest and believe that the bill should include provision allowing the Nigerian education loan fund reform to offer grants to students and enabling them to complete or further their studies. This grant would encourage more students to enroll in schools and help alleviate the burden that will be placed on loans. In the Federal Government True, the Tertiary Education Trust, TEDFUND, could embark on a whopping sum of 600 and 80 billion on public tertiary institutions in 2024 without requesting for payback from the beneficial public institutions. Nigerian students should not be treated any different. Even in the United States, the President, John Biden, last night canceled over 1.2 billion US dollars in student loan debt for 153,000 beneficiaries. In other ways, the administration converted the loans to grants. The frequent repayment period of two years boost NYC is unrealistic as most graduates are yet to find their hearing after two years. In fact, annually, less than 10% of Nigerian graduates get reassured to the label for support completion of their youth service, with therefore proposed extending the minimum repayment duration to five years and is evident that live-attached graduation is challenging due to lack of job opportunities in the country. Although the bill gives room for those who cannot be up after two years to swear affidavit that they are yet to be engaged. We believe this should be upscaled to five years. That is our position. We also suggest that the loan beneficiary be given priority for accelerated employment in the era topic of private organization, allowing them to repay their loan through a dramatic deduction from their earnings. Finally, the establishment of the student loan scheme should not pose a danger to the accessibility and affordability of tertiary education in Nigeria as this will be a yastic for arbitrarily increment of school fees by management of various tertiary institutions, a practice that has become increasingly common. This has resulted in many students contemplating suicide, such as the case of Ada Amuzi, a final year student of the University of Abuja, who was saved from this brink of taking her life, her whole life. The veterinary medicine undergraduate explained that her tuition fee has raised from 79,000 to 197,000, which she could not afford. We have numerous similar instances at our disposal, but time constraint prevents us from sharing them all. And as regards the management of this, we want a situation whereby the life fund will be given full autonomy during this process of readjusting the law. They operate like every other board. They have autonomy and they can do like we have management. We have board of directors, like every other panastas, let them give them that autonomy to operate. It is a view of Nigerian students. Then we want a situation whereby even the board of directors will be given power as part of the managing director, the board of directors should be those that are student oriented, that have the feelings and the yearning of students who get reports. So that some of these components, because Mr. President intentionally mentioned the words to ensure that the common people, the Nigerian students, they have access. A situation whereby where we have 5,000 students in our institution, at least 3,000 can access the law board. If it is too rigid on the eligibility condition, you discover that it's just few students who have access. Then we equally discovered that interest of Nigerian students is hardly represented in the board. But there's one important agency to think with our observation, like JAM, is very keen because they know the authenticity and how students validate, validity is on the button. It is our position and I think we want a situation whereby the beneficiary of the student loan, those who made first class, should have what we call debt forgiveness. This is a position of Nigerian students as well. There is one question that my students have equally asked me and I think I will take point before you. Like we have students of NC as beneficiary, we have ND as beneficiary. These people, they don't go for youth service, but I read in the law that after post-NYC. So if a student of, I'm trying to remember, if a student of NC gets the loan from 100 to 311, and he decided to resume without NYC, I don't know what will happen. Then secondly, if you decide to further direct entry, whether we equally have access to those issues there. I think lastly, we are in position that the management of the loan should be given autonomy, not positioning it to the CBN. It will be very over-suff for Nigerian students to have access to. Because we know that CBN oversees everything in Nigeria, is the banker, is the head of all banks. So this loan fund should operate separately from that handle. Then the last three lines I have here is, in conclusion, we want the member of National Assembly to propose a motion of a national emergency that prohibits public tertiary institution from increasing school fees for the next 10 years. Thereby, this, this is already a presidential order in place that some institutions have violated. The only way to prevent the defeat of this bill is to address the issue of arbitrarily school fees increase. Thank you, as other opinion come from Nigerian students, which are the critical stakeholders in this bill today. I will not fail to drop them as time proceed. Thank you.
Chairman and the Executive Secretary of TEDFUND. With an element of history, I wish to appreciate the Chief of Staff, Louis Hespenio, as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for initiating this bill and for the response to the clamor at the time. I also want to thank this President for expanding his scope to include the skilled sector, which is a low-hanging fruit that we must exploit for the benefit of the Nigerian people. The bill, before you, distinguished senators and honourable members, is a silver bullet to address issues around access, particularly for the vulnerable segment of our population, to higher education, as well as to promote employability, job and wealth creation and the activation of various sectors to grow our national economy. It will also have the added benefit of reducing crime and insecurity in our country as we need to move people from the streets and those who ordinarily take to days. It will promote inclusiveness and equity in our society and also promote national integration. Going forward, as this bill is formally established, it is my hope and aspiration and deep expectation that most of our social investment programs should coalesce and be migrated into this scheme so that as a country, we will stop creating the current dependencies that we are doing and afford Nigerians the opportunity to be able to fend for themselves and their families and to contribute their talents to the development of our country. Mr. Chairman, sir, I want to inform you that there have been extensive consultations on this matter since you passed the bill and Mr. President ascended to it since June of last year. Most stakeholders have been consulted, including TEDFUND. Our students have acknowledged that a lot of their inputs are taken into consideration. So the prayer for you is that first that we commend this bill to the National Assembly for expeditious consideration and passage, but I would like to make just a few comments on to the issue that we raised here. First, based on the fact that there is some commonality and similarity between the operation of a TEDFUND and this type of institution we are trying to establish. I believe the Central Bank of Nigeria should continue to play that important role of custodian of the fund. Currently, TEDFUND resources are actually domestic by CBN. The same should happen with this fund, but the CBN, for goodness sake, should not have any role in the management and administration of this fund. For the very obvious reason that it should concern itself, the commanding heights of our national economy and all the issues that constitute its primary mandate. On the contrary, and to the contrary, I believe even the commonality, the various institutions involved and for ease of coordination, without preempting whatever the honourable minister and we say here as not reasonable, this institution fits properly in the federal Ministry of Education that currently also hosts the Federal Scholarship Board. And I want to dissuade my master's president. Indeed, our prayer should be that the Federal Scholarship Board should not be scrapped. It should remain so that it can provide scholarship and grants to other categories of Nigerians who will leave them as prayed by my humble president. Similarly, I would like to also emphasize that under the current bill, the repayment is not in two years. It states it should commence two years after the completion of your NYC. But there is also a specific provision that says if you gain employment, attack it in this, no, no, it is an OND after your OND or HND or NCE, the moment you commence employment, it should also begin to pay. That provision addresses the issue of NCE and the OND. Again, I've listened to my own gratitude again does the submission by the CBN that they will be, they should be in the position to limit their involvement to the custodians of the fund. And for TEDFUND, again, we have my views. So I think I might just stop here and just commend the bill to the National Assembly for your expeditious consideration and passing. I thank you for the opportunity of making this contribution progress.
I brought two bags of flour here and five bags of super facet. At that time, at the price not up to 1,000 naira per unit. I'm sure my grades change because of, because of that avialable funds meant to be. I'm also glad that the President of Nigerian Students said, as you give this loan, it will be very important to find out whether it has made academic meaning impact on whoever is collecting. And if it is noticed that it has academically changed a beneficiary, we should look towards and courage in such. Because the purpose of the loan should be yes, there is human content, but there are division sees in forms to enable the person to explore it academically. And already we are given, it should have an impact in the collector. Although at that time, I collected my own, I think the methods of reform was not done well and some are the worst. But I want to commend the opinion of the President on this and I pray that the executor should really watch because it will truly change our younger ones.
Because upon the executive director hanging, there shall be three executive directors. To do what? There should be executive director A, executive director B, executive director C. I would like us to look into that. Now, I also discovered on the area of where
Now, I also discovered on the area where we're regrouping the fund, there are the places here where you stay there that if the board decide, then they can waive it. You don't give them such latitude. If you have such latitude, then nobody will pay this loan. There must be specific headlines on what will happen before you can write off the loan. It will be properly stated. Now, I've seen here where you say they are going to issue education bond. You cannot issue education bond. For you to issue a bond, you have to go through their own. So if you want to, they can say issue education bond or other debt instrument through their own or through relevant government agencies. So you can't issue bond on your own. Then, I also saw where it is stated that where the managing director is going around, that the board will decide on who will act on his behalf. How? The same board, you say that going to meet four times in a year. How can they decide who to ask for managing director when the managing director is going around? So these things have to be specified. Now, you said again that they will submit their annual report to the President. No, they should submit their annual report to the President through the Minister of Education. So they can't put the Minister of Education in the dark of what they are doing. Because if I say I have reported to the President, then the Minister is in the dark. Now, anyway, we can't take over it, but I am saying that we have to go back to the Grand Board. That's our committee. We have to go back to the Grand Board and look at this bill from the beginning to the end and make it more elegant. Thank you.
I say this because if there is anybody that would have been defining it, it's myself. Because it was a very, this was a very, when I was in the campaign council. Now, the President took a very, very meticulous intention for the youths and the vulnerable. I'll be more surprised that it is not yet implemented. So, we need that bill to be implemented, to pass and implemented. None of the things I mentioned for that were in my packages. I know that there are so many welfare packages for the youths. This is just one of them. The loan scheme is one of them. Employment is one of them. Capacity in terms of skill acquisition is one of them. So, my own is that I am available because I was part of the bill from the campaign council. I was part of the bill from the executive and I'm here again to help in the family. Waiting for you to get that bill passed. I will do our best to pass this bill so that the youths can start enjoying. A bill, a law cannot contain everything. But as we move into execution, certain things will be amended. So, for the dance, it's not everything that you can get in one day. But at least you must know that the President has a lot of reputation for you. By the time it's implemented, you will know that this has, well, I don't know if you want to hear it. This official has a lot of purpose and hope under the rebuttal agenda.
I am very interested in this bill because as far as I'm concerned, this was something we initiated in Baelsa almost ten years, more than ten years ago as governor, as part of the educational revolution that I, on this prior service, have done. The introduction of the Tachary Education Loans Board Law and then the Education Development Trust Fund Law. And then, in addition to the health insurance, which were funding at five percent. Each of these areas were in five, five percent. So, it's not something that's new. The federal government, as a matter of fact, is coming up more than ten years late and welcome on board. I believe that we will work together on this and it's very interesting. This will democratised education and make it accessible to the members of our society that need the support who are vulnerable. And here's TEDFUND made a point. When you are doing this, you're not just creating avenues for supporting young people. You are actually investing, properly speaking, in national security. When you move up young people and give people an opportunity and it means to create capacity, develop capacity. It goes a long way to address a lot of the job creation, wealth creation, national security, security of our communities and so on and so forth. So, this is why I support it, gentlemen. I think at this point, perhaps our comments, we may as well move to the executive session and then ultimately.
The recommendations that were made at the public hearing and because these adjustments need to be done very timely within a timeline in order to expedite implementation or the passage of the bill. Because this bill is very close and dear to Mr. President's heart. He wants this bill to be passed as an act of parliament within a very short and possible time, reasonably, possibly, as possible time. Because Nigerian youths cannot wait to have access to funding that will support their education and make the access to education a seamless process. Because education, which is knowledge, is power. And it's only when you have education that you can be empowered and to lift generations of Nigerians out of poverty. And I would like to also quote His Excellency, Mr. President, who always says that we must eradicate poverty, we must alleviate people from poverty in this country and it's only through education we can do that. And if we look back to every generation of Nigerian and African, we will always find a trace of poverty within our family, no matter how well off we are. So this also has made every stakeholder at the decision-making table during this public hearing.